Hey, how you doing? I wanna get to know ya. Tell me what's your name? Hey, what's you? You're gonna look at me or better look at you? Woo! Woo!
Let's think 45 minutes late and I finally come out. It was 2:30 over here and I sent y'all back there. If you ain't called session yet. And it was 10 of y'all back there, but we hadn't waited on y'all.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session and reconvene in open session.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? We are now in open session. I would entertain a motion to certify the closed session by from that while in closed session, there was no formal action taken and that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed and all public business matters identified in the motions convening in closed session were heard, discussed, or considered. I entertain a motion to certify this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Counsel, I'll call for a 10-minute recess. The meeting will resume at 5:28.
We have our certification vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Roll call.
Lily Fegginspoon.
Yes.
Alex Graham.
Yes.
Gavin Honeycomb.
Yes.
Delora Sluster is absent. Mike Moody.
Yes.
Chuck Moss.
Yes.
Ben Taylor.
Yes.
And Joseph Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you, Anna. I'll call for a 10-minute recess. You think I will... Okay. I'd like to reconvene. First of all, before we get started, those who are watching by YouTube or whatever, I apologize for the delay, but your counsel was in closed session with multitude of issues to address, so I apologize for the 50-minute delay. So we'll get started. Before we get started, I want to let you know that we are blessed this evening and not putting the individual on the spot, but we have a young man here today named Will Stacy. Will, if you will stand up for me, I want to welcome Will. Will is new to our area. He is studying political science. And Will, if you could give us just a little bit of background of who you are and why you're attending our meeting tonight.
My name is Will Stacy.
Oh, if you would, come up to the microphone so everyone can hear you and whatnot, but we do appreciate you coming tonight.
My name is Will Stacy. My dad is the new pastor at South Hill United Methodist Church, and I'm a political science major at Randolph Bacon College, and I'm here tonight just to get some experience of what a meeting like this is like.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Will reached out to me about two weeks ago, and the term, the term he wanted to do was shout, excuse, excuse, but Will reached out to me and wanted to speak and wanted to mentor the mayor, and I said, "Well, I don't know about that." I said, "But I advocate he come tonight and see how a council meeting run and encourage him to get involved in political government." So again, we appreciate you coming tonight, appreciate your family here in the area, and I mean that. So I'll call this meeting to order. Shall we pray? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we have assembled here tonight to do thy will and thy works. Dear heavenly Father, we have those among us who are suffering with family members, and we ask that you comfort them, lay your healing hands upon them. Only you know what the future lies, but dear Lord, as we assemble here tonight, let us be mindful of those. And dear heavenly Father, be mindful of our meeting tonight, be mindful of our community and our town as we go forward to do what thy is best and in thy will. In Jesus' name we praise. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, Anna.
Lily Fegginspoon.
Present.
Alex Graham.
Here.
Gavin Honeycomb.
Present.
Delora Sluster is absent. Mike Moody.
Here.
Chuck Moss.
Here.
Ben Taylor.
Here.
And Joseph Taylor. Thank you, Anna. Okay, counsel, I ask for a motion for approval of agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay, thank you. Counsel, in your packet was the approval of minutes from our July 11 regular and special meetings. May I have a motion for approval?
I make a motion to reapprove the minutes from our June 13, 2022 meeting as presented.
Okay.
Aye, Mr. By the clerk.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
We, we have two separate sets of minutes, and they're July 11 regular.
And special. Okay, so let me go back and clarify. I apologize. So on the July 11 regular meeting, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On July 11, we had a special meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Mahmood.
Members of council and staff and general public, I'm going to be requesting an amendment to our budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. I've got it written down, but I may try to paraphrase it as best as I can. As we already know, that on June 13, the town council adopted the budget for fiscal year 2022-2023, this budget went into effect July 1. Budget included any rates, taxes, fees for the town budget. The budget was adopted on June 13 after it was advertised locally and after a public hearing was held on May 9. There were no tax rate increases for the town of South Hill. However, we did have a water and sewer consumption rate increase. This was advertised, and it was brought up during the public hearing. The increase was due to the increased cost of water and sewer rates for chemicals, labor supplies to provide this utility service to our customers. Now, also included in the new budget was an increase in the water sewer connection fees. I note that these fees have not increased since 1993, even though we all know that labeled has material equipment costs, that fee has remained the same for 29 years. It doesn't affect any dwellings that already have the connections in place. Then, the, this increased fee was not brought to the public's attention except in the printed advertising of the budget in the local newspaper and on the website. I personally feel that many do not read all of the budget items listed in the news as they rely upon the town to point out any changes in fees or taxes that are within the new budget. And with that being said, I would ask this council to consider delaying imposition of the new water and sewer connection fee until fiscal year 23-24. That would allow the budget and finance and the town to look at this matter again. Since this request is a change to our already adopted budget, we must have a public hearing per the state code before any vote could take place regarding a budget amendment. At this time, I make a motion that we have a public hearing at our September council meeting to receive public opinion regarding a budget amendment for the water and sewer connection fees only.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. So I just want to, just to get you to clarify, Counsel Mahmood, I'm sorry. So you're saying that the budget and finance committee would look at this in next fiscal year 23-24's budget about what increases we would do then, but if, for right now, they would just be tabled?
For this, for this.
Fiscal year.
For this fiscal year right now, the bud, the water and sewer connection fee that was in effect.
Yes, sir.
Prior to this July 1.
Yes, sir.
Will remain in effect if council so desires.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, a question. So it will remain in effect from the 21-22 budget, that rate?
Yes. That is correct. The, the rate would remain, water connection fee, $1,000, irrigation meter fee, $1,000, sewer connection fee, $1,500, water connection fee out of town, $2,000, sewer connection fee out of town, $3,000. I am asking that that remain in effect until council and staff can look at it later.
And normally, I would wait for the public hearing, Mr. Mayor, to make comment regarding this, but in order to at least advise my constituents as to my position and my colleagues, my concern about the proposed motion, though be it practically intentioned, it concerns me that we, we would push the rewind button, not the reset button, but the rewind button on a budget that withstood analysis, consideration from January 20, from January through June, numbers of committee meetings, and this body considered it with opportunity by public notice for attendance at hearings, letters to committee members, council members. I do not believe it is wise policy to push, not reset, but rewind on an existing... I do not believe it is wise policy to push, not reset, but rewind on an existing budget when I believe the proper method would be to leave the current rate in place, and if it should be reduced, consider it in the upcoming budget year process, which normally begins January through June. That would be my suggestion, but I understand the motion.
May I respond?
Yes, sir.
Under normal circumstances, I would agree with your thoughts. However, in my 16-plus years on this council, I cannot remember, and believe me, I have tried, I had, I cannot remember a single instance when we had any type of a rate increase that it was not announced to the general public verbally. On this particular rate increase, connection fee increase, it was not announced during the public session. I feel that is being unfair to the citizens who are in the process of building dwellings, the contractors, developers. I think this would give, if the council so desires, this would give them ample of time to adjust their budgets for future building purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I would have to take exception to part of that. We had public hearing twice. I mean, it was put up on PowerPoint presentation. It was discussed in, in the budget process. We've known about this last year and this year because of our shortages and having to cover with the water and sewer situation. This, this was done, and, and, you know, what do we do? The next person who wants to come in and say, "Well, I don't like this, I'd like to put this off the next year." These costs, in all likelihood, are going to be passed along to the consumer when they put in the meters. It's going to be, I know, when I built my house, I know it was passed along to me. I had to pay the rate. But we had the public hearings. I mean, this was duly advertised, PowerPoint presentation, you know, we specifically say, "Oh, this is going up, this, this, and this," but there was a lot in the budget that's not done like that, to call it every particular. I mean, it's a 90-page document, so.
It's, it's over a 100-page document, and whenever we have had a rate increase or a tax increase, which we haven't had, it has been announced. This was not announced verbally. I fully understand that it was in the PowerPoint, it was printed in the newspapers. I personally, I'm on the budget and finance, I knew it was there. We did not discuss it this year in our budget and finance meetings. It was discussed two years ago that it was something that we need to take a look at. It did not come up in our discussions during budget and finance, and I was there for every second we had one. It didn't come up during the public input. Nobody had any questions about it. Commonly, if you don't have questions about it when you go through a budget, you go through the pages, and it's well over 100 pages, you go through the pages, anybody have any questions? No. You move on to the next page. And that's why I, I didn't bring it up because nobody had questions. If you want to put the blame on somebody, I am chairperson of the water and sewer in this town. If you want to put the blame on my shoulders, put it on me. Hindsight, I should have brought it up since it was not brought up during the public forum. I'll take that. But I think this is the only way to be fair to the consumers, to the builders, to the developers. Don't hit them with something now that some of them did not know about on June 30, and then when they walk in in July, August, or September, they get doubled? No. I'm not in favor of that. It will be up to this council to decide what to do. I am simply asking for it to be put on the agenda for a public hearing during our September meeting. And I will leave it to council.
So I want to piggyback on that, and Mike, you said two years ago it was discussed.
It was.
Originally, so I've been on here 18 months, so I don't, and I know I was in and out last year.
That is correct.
But this year, I was there, and just for public information, I was there every meeting. I never missed a meeting. I was there the whole time. I would like to reiterate what Councilman Moody has said. We never talked about it. It was never mentioned. Something that significant, and again, and blame me as well because I'm on the committee, and I didn't go back and look at it before we voted on it in June. I asked to see an article from the paper of where it was printed. It was this big in the newspaper, and one of the bottom right-hand corners, I have it in my house, and you'd need a magnifying glass to have seen it. That's how small it was. Usually, things like that are a little bit larger and, but again, just, I want contractors that are in here and the people that are in here to know that we never discussed this this year, and until Biddy stood at, Mr. Freeman, I'm sorry, stood at that podium last month and brought it up, I knew nothing about it, and I apologize.
Councilman.
Mr. Crow, does the public notice that's included in the paper, as well as other internet sources, comply with standard font requirements by the Virginia Code or whatever the standards that you're required to follow in terms of advertising the budget?
Yes.
It's been suggested that it was small. All of it's small, isn't it? To the regular eye, but it's in compliance with regular standards that we print every year, and they're expected of you as town clerk, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
May I ask a question? May I ask a question, please? And did we not have two public hearings, one for us and one for the, for the public? I mean, one in which we were informed and the public as well? And the public had an opportunity to weigh in line item by line item?
Point of clarification.
Yes.
We had a work session.
Work session, yes. Excuse me.
That was open to the public.
To the public.
And a public hearing.
And a public hearing. So in essence, we had two opportunities for the public to speak.
If I may reiterate, it was, the advertising, the public hearing was all done legally per the code. That is not the question. My concern is that we had an increase that was not brought to the general public's attention verbally. I feel that we, as a council, should have done that. We did not. This is a matter that I think we can correct, we should correct, and I will leave it to a vote of the council to do so with their discretion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman. All right, Anna, we have a motion and we have a second, correct?
Correct.
And I, will you please repeat the motion so that it's clear?
I would ask this council in the motion to consider, now, I make a motion, we have a public hearing at our September council meeting to receive public opinion regarding a budget amendment for the water and sewer connection fees only.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Anna.
Fagan Spoon.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Luster is absent. Moody.
Yes.
Moss.
Yes.
Ben Taylor.
Yes.
And Joseph Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Next on the agenda is citizens to address council. And before I get to that, I want to reiterate a couple of things. One, just merely, and this is for those people that are here tonight and anyone in the, that's watching and in the future, but when you sign up to speak, you're not just signing up to speak, you're also committing yourself that you will respect the parties in the room, you will respect council, and you respect your fellow person. Personal attacks or slanderous remarks will not be tolerated. Now, we're all adults. What I'm asking is, each body, if you come to the council with, with a position or with a topic, you stick to it and do it in such a respectful way as you would want to be spoken to, to yourself. As we have had discussions before, an individual speaking has three minutes. I think we've been, we try to hold it to that with respect of those in the room and those that are involved. The remarks should be limited to the topic of the individual, the group that's asked to speak. I'm here to enforce those rules and also to conduct a meeting in such a way as professional and courteous. I want to reiterate that, and I would ask that respectfully from those that are speaking. Speakers may not address or, or question town, town staff directly. Questions should be directed to the council, who then they, the council, may direct to the staff to respond. And these are the policies that we have adopted that have been in place. So I would respectfully ask those that are here tonight to speak, those in the future that are, are going to speak, if you would, to remind you to read what you sign up in your topic, but also conduct yourself in such a way. The first citizen to address council, and I just want for clarification, was Mr. Tony Hayes. Do you still want your time, Mr. Hayes? I know you, earlier today.
I do, because you didn't have so many council members.
Okay, so would I may ask you, sir, to come to the microphone and state your name? And once you've stated your name, we'll start the clock. I mean, I just want, I have to.
My name is Tony Hayes. I'm a local builder here. You all guys know me. We had a issue earlier in the month, and you all received a letter that was falsely led you to believe that I was upset about your sewer rate increase. As you said, Mr. Taylor, when I build a house for you, that cost goes you to homeowners. I don't want my customers paying anymore, but it doesn't really affect me on that end. So that was not what happened in this particular incidence. We were told at the day before it'd be $3,000 for this hookup. Same thing I paid for the last units we done. Then a day later, CJ calls me and says, "Tony, we've got to do the new rate, and it's going to be," I've done it, "it's time and materials, anything over a one-inch connection." And I said, "Okay, no problem. What is that?" And he told me, he said, "Well, we got a water meter left. We can sell it to you for this, this, and this will be $5,000 for this service." And I, he said, "Is that okay?" I said, "Yes. If that's what it is, that's what it is. It's time and material. How you going to argue with it?" So my, I said, "My wife will be over the morning and give you her check for the $5,000." She comes over the next morning, give her a check. We were informed, whether this took place or not, that when she brought the check, our town manager had informed them, "No, it would not be $5,000. It would be $6,500." So Gretchen comes back, calls me, yada, yada. I tell her, whatever, we, and she, so she comes back to see Mr. Callis again, and he makes the comment, "What is $1,500 to you guys?" Well, if $1,500 is $1,500, it's a lot of money to me. Unfortunately, you know, I have to work with my hands, so $1,500 is a lot of money. So he, that's what set this whole thing in motion. I couldn't give a rat's you-know-what about what y'all charged for it, so I know the cost goes up. Cost of my houses have gone through the roof the last couple of years. I know it cost you. But you, as a council, when you sit back and look, all the stuff that we're building around here, the money we're putting in this community over the last year, if you would think about the tax bases you're getting off of that, the water and sewer bills you're getting, forget about the $1,500, forget about the $6,000 it costs. If you think about what that's going to generate over the years to this community in taxes, you'll get your money back if you gave the stuff to all the developers. We had a developer here today that said, "If you, if you raise this tax rate on him, he's going to not build these 160 units." Well, you know what? The tax base you just threw away. So use your head a little bit. But the whole thing in a nutshell is, just because Mr. Callis said, "I owed you another 100, $1,500 bucks," that shouldn't have been so. It should have been, it was time and material. And I asked CJ in the meeting we had, I turned around and said, "CJ, is it time and materials over?" "Yes, sir, it is." Well, how does a man who prices his stuff tell me one thing, and then 12 hours later, it's gone up $1,500? The only way that's possible in this world is materials went up, and it's no way from 4:15 to 9:15 the next morning this could have taken place. But I don't expect anything of you guys, I'll be honest with you, but I would like to you to understand the whole, what transpired, and if you would like to see if anybody felt threatened or if I did anything out of the way, we videoed this whole thing because I figured it was going to get blown out of proportion where y'all would think something, you got one side of the story. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
It's going to be what it is.
All right. Okay, the second citizens to address council, Wade Crowder.
Yes, just a second, please, ma'am.
Would you state, would you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, in the bill of liberty and justice for some of us.
Thank you. State your name, sir.
All right, I'm Wade Crowder. Last time, last month, I got preached that because I used cuss words, and Josh is the one that preached the sermon to me. "Oh, you can't cuss in here." Well, damn it, it's not a dirty word. He needs to look at the dictionary. God gave you two heels, one mouth. Damn it, is, I done my damnedest to correct the problem. That's not a cuss word.
Mr. Crow.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. He done it to me. Now, I'd like an apology from him.
Okay, but.
I'm going to give him the opportunity to apologize for criticizing me on, out in the public.
All right, but Mr. Crowder, please, as I stated earlier, personal attacks, please, just.
I'm not personal attacking him.
Okay.
I'm telling him, he attacked me. Now, what do I do? Crawl up under the chair? Oh, God! No, I stand up for myself. I'd like an apology. Now, he can give me an apology, I'll drop it. If he don't give me an apology, I do whatever I can to help him out. Now, do you want to apologize? Nope. You get your sign, too. So, okay, that, so that's over on that one. Now, the mayor, I talked to you last week, you were going to get back with me, the dumpster sitting in the street in front of, behind the fire department, and the dump, and the garbage truck having to go wrong way down the street. You never got back with me, so I didn't expect you to because, you know, you don't have time. I got me a note this time before I want to get excited and get all loaded on different things, but I got those two things. And the town manager, we got to do something. I mean, y'all got to do something. Don't sit on your hands. Now, I supposed to criticize, don't sit on your hands and let this thing ball keep rolling down the road. He works for me, y'all work for me, I work my butt off to pay these stupid taxes. I never asked to be in the town of South Hill. I'd much rather be on the outskirts, but no, y'all want to get that 15 cent. Now, this 15 cent ain't even worth it. We need to do something with the town manager. He needs to have somebody over top of him. Right now, he's God, and everybody has to humble down to him, except for some fools like myself, and I ain't humbling down to it. And it's time to correct the problem. Y'all are the ones to agree on all this stuff. $6,000 on sewer hookup, somebody had to agree to it. He suggested that y'all agree to it, and then boom, oh, we didn't notice. Well, I knew about it. I had heard through the vines that the garbage rate was going up, but I, I mean, sewer rate, but I figured it was going up maybe $500, $1,000, you know, so I ain't a contractor no more. But what, 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 what? So I didn't, I didn't say nothing, but it ain't right doubling their bills. It ain't right doubling their bills, and next thing you know, y'all going to give him a raise, going to give him another Lexus, you're going to give him a jet airplane. I mean, you got to stop it off. You got, you got, wait a minute.
No, no, Mr. Crow. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you politely, we've heard your message, sir.
Wait a minute, the other man talked longer than I did. So how could that work? Oh, it's justice for some. That's how it works, justice for some.
Okay. Public hearings?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have one public hearing tonight. We have a request by Woody Opus to rezone his property on the west side of Ridgewood Avenue.
Probably next.
From single-family residential R-110 to single-family R-16. I'd like to open the floor for comment. Seeing that it is not, I'll close the public hearing.
Okay, council question?
Mr. Hatch, just because I'm not familiar with it, and my glasses are dirty, request by Lisa Kit, 603, which, which two of those, which are those buildings? What are those buildings?
Well, this is a property.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, where's the property? I'm sorry.
It, it's on Ridgewood Avenue.
It's one street, may I please, it's one street, one street this side of the old Burlington plant.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. All right, now I'm good. I just wanted for me to hear where the property was.
All right. Yes, if you'll come to the microphone.
I just want to know.
State your name, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Hatch, if you state your name, please.
I'm Joe Church, former contractor. If it's 6,000 square feet and it's 50-foot frontage, that's a mighty small lot. And I'm just, you know, requesting, Mr. Oakley, tell me, what is it gonna be used for?
Mr. Oakley, if you'll come to the microphone, just state your name.
Woody Oakley, these lots currently zoned R-110. I'm asking for them to be rezoned to R-16, fundamental, both single-family, so the use of the lot doesn't change. The fundamental changes is that the setbacks, the width, the lot width for R-16 is 50 minimum, and for R-110 is 75 minimum. 50, after talking to Crutchfield Associates, did it seem to me to be a little bit too small for what I wanted to do, so I have had three lots drawn that exceed the minimum for R-16, but they do not meet the minimum for R-110. They'll be 66 feet of frontage. Two of them will have in excess of 10,000 square feet, one will have 9,700 square feet if they approved. And I'd be happy to pass these out to you guys if you want.
You can leave them on the table.
Mr. Mayor, how you doing, Mr. Oakley?
Did, I just want to make sure I heard this right, that the R-110 requires a 75-foot setback?
The minimum, minimum lot width is 75 feet at the setback line for R-110, and it's 50 at the setback for R-16.
And these will be 66 feet?
These, these came out to be 66 feet.
Okay.
In width, and one is 68.
That is the width of the street.
At the street. Uh-huh. And it maintains that pretty much all the way back.
Thank you so much.
So have you closed?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the public hearing has been closed. Counsel?
I make a motion that we, that we. Rezone, yes, thank you, Ms. Fagan, thank you, that we rezone this area of this request, the SE 2022-5. That's the one we're all incorrect. Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Can you oppose? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have a couple of things for you. The first is, we have received from Fire Chief Michael Vaughn, request for permission for the Fire Department to hold its annual bucket drive fundraiser on Saturday, September 3rd, and donations will be accepted at six locations throughout the town, on North Mecklenburg near the Easy Stop, on East Atlantic Street near Fair Auction and Realty, on West Atlantic Street near the Food Lion, West Danville Street near the Slip In, Shaw Street at Walmart, and on Peebles and Fur Street.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'd just like to congratulate and recognize Chief Vaughn and our Fire Department that has been on a lifesaving mission down in Kentucky. Just yeoman's work. We're so proud and blessed to have them part of our community. I have seen screenshots or text messages from other fire chiefs and victims and families and other government officials just congratulating them and thanking them and blessing them. I'm so glad they all came home safe. And Chief Vaughn, thank you so much for what you and your entire department, along with all of our fire and EMS and Police Department do for our community. Thank you so much.
So Councilman Moss sort of took some of the words out of my mouth, because I wanted to allude to that, even though it's not on the agenda. Because Chief Vaughn came to my office with CJ Dean a few days ago, and he had this look on his face, and you could tell he was very troubled and bothered by something. And he told me that, about the situation out there in Kentucky, and that he had been contacted, and initially, it was gonna be Chief Vaughn and Brandon Vaughn going out there, but while they sat in my office, I said, I asked him, can you find someone else to go with you? And without hesitation, he said, yes. And the Fire Department and a number of people immediately got on the phone and started contacting people and publicizing this. Every, I think everyone knows that, I don't want to leave anybody out, but Emmett Williams and Williams Enterprises and their family donated a box truck and a fuel car, VCU CMH donated pallets of stuff, Tractor Supply donated things, Crowder Height Cruise Funeral Home, so many people came together to support this effort and filled up that 26-foot box truck. So the Fire Department did all the heavy lifting to get it out there and to serve those people, and thank you for that. But thank you also to all the other citizens of our town that helped make it possible to help those folks. So it was a great effort all the way around. The other thing on the agenda was to just provide a, an update on the work session that we had today. And, you know, at the, at the last council meeting, there was a motion to set up a work session with council to discuss grant program possibilities for multiple housing projects. And I won't go into a lot of detail, because the meeting lasted over two hours, but we had Erica Tanner from the Planning District Commission come in and talk about what they do to help with housing projects, and we had Chris Thompson from Virginia Housing come in and talk about what Virginia Housing does to help. And then a number of speakers talked about a variety of different things, but talked about the importance of looking forward, working together, and we have more work to do to get together to figure out what it is exactly we need to do. So that's, that's a brief update, several of you were there. The other thing that was, is also worth mentioning is the governor has directed the Department of Housing and Community Development to host a series of listening sessions around the state, and they had one over, and it's by invitation, and DHCD is sending them out. There was one August 1st across the street, and one of the things that came out of it is some things will probably need to be done legislatively, and then we'll need to look at some things that we can do locally as well. So that's what I have for you. Thank you.
Good evening. The first item that I have tonight is concerning our real estate tax rate. Based on the recent assessment of real property, property values in the town have increased by approximately 12%. Code of Virginia, Section 58 dash point one dash 3321, requires either a reduction in the rate of levy for the forthcoming tax year, so as to cause such rate of levy to produce no more than 101% of the previous year's real property tax levies, or holding a public hearing to implement an effective rate increase. I would ask for a public hearing to be scheduled for the meeting on September 12th, 2022, regular meeting of the Town Council, to hear comments regarding the proposed real estate tax rate amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I move to hold a public hearing September 12th, 2022, Town Council Meeting, to hear comments regarding the proposed real estate tax rate amendment.
I'd second that.
Yes, sir. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Can you oppose?
Thank you. The next item is an appropriation of funds. The town has been awarded a 2022 CDVG planning grant for planning assistance for the town of South Hill's Nick's Lane Area Comprehensive Project. The Department of Housing and Community Development will make a total of up to $60,000 available to the town for researching and developing strategies for the project. I ask that you appropriate the grant funds for this purpose.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to appropriate $60,000 in planning grant funds from the Department of Housing and Community Development for the Nick's Lane Area Comprehensive Project.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Can you oppose?
The next item is an appropriation of grant funds as well. In fiscal year 2021, 2022, the town received a 2022 Virginia statewide business district resurgence grant in the amount of $50,000 to be utilized as a match to our current facade and outfit grant programs to enhance the downtown. At the close of fiscal year 2122, we had funds remaining in the amount of $32,975.85. As the appropriation technically lapsed with the close of the fiscal year, the remaining funds need to be appropriated in fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. So I would ask that you appropriate the remaining grant funds for the stated purpose.
Move to appropriate the funds as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Can you oppose? Okay. Okay, council, in your packet were the reports for the July request of approval as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Okay. Council, any committee reports?
Yes, the Budget and Finance Committee. And Mr. Taylor, you want to, you want to talk about this, about the bank funds, the investments?
Yes, we met, I forgot the date, it was last week, I believe it was. And we had been requested to meet and to also come up with proposals from local banks in regards to investment opportunities. And analyzing the proposals received, the proposal from the Bank of Charlotte County and the proposal from First Citizens Bank provide the most favorable interest rates. However, the proposal from First Citizens is the most favorable in liquidity as well as interest. In speaking with the representatives of First Citizens Bank, interest in the town's checking account has been increased from 0.2% to 0.3% effective August 4th, 2022. Their analysis of our checking account indicates they will need to maintain an average balance of at least $7.5 million to avoid paying service charges. Staff recommends investing $6 million with First Citizens and $3 million in the VIP Stable NAV Liquidity Pool. This will provide $8 million in liquid funds with no penalty for making withdrawals, as funds are needed for multiple planned projects.
To be clear, at that committee meeting, the committee asked us to go back and get, some, please come up here and help, asked us to come back and get some additional information about early withdrawal penalties and things of that nature.
And what we found on those two proposals, the Bank of Charlotte County, their proposal was to invest half of the money that we wanted to invest in a six-month treasury bill, and then the other half in a 12-month treasury bill. Those treasury bills are non-callable, which means we cannot take the funds out early. We would have to wait until they matured. The proposal from First Citizens Bank was laddered over 10 months. The way they laddered it, 1/10 of our investment would mature each month, beginning October 31st of this year, through July 31st of next year. If we were to pull out funds early, there is a 1% to 2% loss of principal, but because of the way it's structured, I do not believe that that will be a problem.
Principal or interest?
Principal.
So one dollar cannot be cashed in, or the other one, if you do, there's a significant penalty.
But because of the way it's laddered, with 1/10 of it maturing each month at the end of the month.
Understand, understand.
And then if we invest the additional $3,000 into the VIP pool, that's available at any time with no penalty for early withdrawal. So we have access to those funds whenever we need them.
What was the rate on that?
The rate that First Citizens, First Citizens proposed was 3% yield to worse with a 0.3% fee, so in essence, 2.7%.
And the liquidity pool was what?
Well, liquidity pool varies from day to day. As of on August 3rd, it was 2.16%, August 4th, 2.13%, and August 5th, 2.12%, and that's the last data that I have.
Got you.
I know we had a discussion about daily interest.
Yes.
Versus, would you please tell us what you found out? Because we had, we had a conversation about daily interest with the liquidity pool versus...
Right, so the liquidity pool does compound, interest does compound daily on that. On a $1 million investment at 2.16%, which was the rate that was in effect on 8/3, the additional interest that could be earned on that $1 million in a year's time is $234.32. So if we invested the $3 million there, it's an additional $702.96.
Yes, sir. Quick question, you know, I was at that meeting, and it was my understanding we were gonna move all of this to the liquidity pool, until we came up with exactly what we wanted to do, what we could investigate, and maybe come back in September and make that decision?
That was discussed, but we didn't have all the information that we have today. So that's totally up to the council.
Because this is the first time I'm seeing this, is tonight.
Right, exactly. Because I just received a lot of information today.
And again, I just have a hard time voting on something that I'm just seeing for the first time.
And if that's what you all would like to do, we can definitely do that.
Well, I thought that was a consensus of the committee. I thought that was a consensus of the committee.
Well, I don't disagree with you. When did you get this data?
Some of the information I received today.
Oh, you received today?
Yes.
That's what I remember, was that we discussed, and you said, if you could get it, we would, but you weren't sure when you could get the information.
Exactly.
And I agree with the coming in today. I would like for us to wait.
We can definitely do that.
I would like for us to wait, see what's gonna happen, okay.
So we can move the funds to the liquidity pool, and then we can pull it out.
Pull it out.
Maybe to First Citizens, if that's what council wishes to do.
Finance Committee, do we need a motion for that?
Well, you do, but I want to make sure. I heard what you said again. Going back to the meeting, I was under the impression that we would put the money in the liquidity pool until we had some concrete numbers from our local banks, and then we would make a decision whether to leave it in the liquidity pool, or distribute it, or whatever. I think I heard you say just now, we do have the option, while we think about this and study this, since we just received it, of putting in the liquidity pool, and then in September, we've had time to study this, come back and make that decision.
We can do that.
And we've done that, we agree wholeheartedly. We said we recommend put it in the liquidity pool, because we did not know when we were gonna be able to get additional information. We have, we have that, and so...
Well, I just think in fairness to council, since we just got this, we probably need to look at it, and then...
So I'd like to make, so I'd like to make a motion that we move the, was it eight, you know, was it six, seven, eight?
Nine.
Nine, I'm sorry. So I would make the motion that we move the $9 million to the VIP Stable NAV Liquidity Pool, until maybe we have a work session, maybe with the Budget and Finance, and talk about this, Sheila, with you again, and with Mr. Callis, and that we revisit this in our September meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Counsel, any other committee reports? Other business, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two items of note. I can take each one separately, I assume, after you. Based on the information provided to council, I move that council make a Freedom of Information Act request, that Councilman Shep Moss provide all photos, texts, emails, correspondences, and any other documents or records related to the photos taken at the Town Hall loading dock, and the burn site adjacent to the town's wastewater treatment plant.
And that is in the form of a motion, Councilman Day?
Yes, sir, it is.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second. Any discussion?
This is for the foyer, as you present.
Yes, sir, this is for the foyer request.
Any discussion, further discussion? Roll call, Hannah.
Bacon Spoon?
Yes.
Graham?
No.
Honeycutt?
No.
Lester is...
Lester is absent. Moody?
This is for the four-year only. Yes.
Moss?
No.
Ben Taylor?
Yes.
And Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
That is four yeses, one absent, three nos.
All right.
Okay. After prayerful and thoughtful consideration, based on information provided to this council, I move to refer the matters of Mr. Moss's behavior in allegedly trespassing and removing documents from the town's possession and that be referred to the police and the Commonwealth attorney.
And that is in the form of a motion?
Put that in the form of a motion, yes.
Do I have a second, counsel?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. This is so unfortunate. I remember Mayor Marion, that this scripted thing, same thing happened with you before I came on council and from the same individual who is presenting this as well tonight. At the end of the day, for me, this is not about who took a picture, who removed papers. This is about what the council was told and was presented. The truth was not told, in my opinion. There were pieces of the puzzle that were left out. And in my opinion, this is nothing more than a witch hunt. For, and again, my opinion. Because I remember Mr. Taylor, you know, in that meeting, and when I say Mr. Taylor, Mr. Ben Taylor, you know, and I've gone back and watched the video many times accusing the fire department of doing this, three different occasions in that meeting verbally. In my opinion, this has nothing to do with what happened. Again, we were lied to, we were told somebody was there the whole time, and then we found out otherwise. And it's just unfortunate that it has to be portrayed out in this manner in the public. People are watching. And it's just unfortunate, Mr. Taylor, Councilman Taylor, that you're leaving your legacy, you know, again, trying to go after individuals, but the real person that is to blame here, in my opinion, was the one that gave us misinformation. And, you know, you're not willing to take a stand there. And it's just real unfortunate. And I think the community as a whole know that. I'd say the vast majority of the community know this. And it's just shameful, it's an embarrassment. And I'm just so sorry that this has happened to Councilman Moss. You know, it's not many that many up here could do to me that had already been done. I can take the heat, I can take the hits. But it's just sad, you know, at the end of the day, is that really what's important? It's just, it's a sad day for our town. And, you know, I hate this will be a part of your legacy when you leave here next year.
Any other further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want the citizens of South Hill and Ward 3 to know that I've worked extremely hard to stand up for transparency. I have tried to get you the truth. And, you know, this is a nuclear personal attack, as was described to me. You know, my job has even been threatened by whom I believe, a sitting council member to my current employer with a written letter. And this is nothing more than a diversion and ploy to cover up lies and misinformation that were given to you and to this council. And if this council decides to double down and triple down, as even what has been said, then we'll just play that game. Everything I've done has been in good faith. It has been with intentions of betterment of this town. But sometimes you got to take a stand, put your big boy britches on, and stand up for yourself. And this is an absolute embarrassment. But when you have council members who are not seeking reelection, who have been here too long, this is what you get. So council will vote how they vote. I stand behind my actions. My actions were created by lies by town manager. And I will not stop fighting for transparency, honesty, and truth for the citizens of this town, regardless of where this vote goes. I'm not going anywhere.
Any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion?
I have something to say. There's no difference in what Councilman Moss did on going on property that did not belong to him and removing documents from this town that did not belong to him. He had no right. Absolutely no right. There's no difference in coming in an office in here and rummaging through it, rummaging through a waste can looking for something, rummaging through a file cabinet. That doesn't give him transparency rights. He went on property. He had no business going on, and he took out documents that had names on it. He says he turned them all in. Did he turn them all in?
If you have any other questions of me, you'll be talking to my attorney.
If you turned them all in, that's fine, but I have somebody said, suppose you didn't turn them all in, Ben, where are they? Where are those documents? I spent many sleepless nights, and I don't take this lightly. I understand the implications, I understand what I'm doing. He's admitted going on the property, posted property, no trespassing property. And taking and retrieving documents that did not belong to him. It's illegal.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Somebody needs to ask the question.
Excuse me, I believe I have a floor.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Crowe, I'm sorry, please.
I'm sorry too. I'm sorry too.
No. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please, please. No, you need to sign up, I'm just being, I'm, no, no, okay.
This is ridiculous.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second, either further discussion?
I'm not through, I'm still, I'm still talking, I'm still trying to talk. I'm still trying to talk.
I'm sorry.
This is a marriage, don't need to pray for the damn, your brothers and sisters in Kentucky right now, what are y'all doing?
All right, Councilman Taylor, you, Cap?
Do you want to clear the room?
Okay, please, please. Please.
Councilman Taylor, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, sir, please.
You do what's right in your heart, that's all you got to do, and God will be with you, you understand me?
All right, Councilman Taylor, continue.
Mr. Moss does not understand the law.
It's Councilman Moss to you.
Councilman Moss does not understand the legalities of taking care of government documents, public documents.
Please.
Public documents. I was a high school principal for 16 years, and every morning I'd come in.
I'm going to ask politely one more time, sir, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
I'll leave.
Every morning I'd go in, I'd cut my computer on, and I'd click the button, I've got demographics of every child, ninth through 12th grade. Where they live, number of parents, search security, every piece of information that you need. I'd click another button, I've got attendance, I've got discipline, I've got schedule, I've got grades, all that information, everybody grades nine through 12. First to second Saturday in June, those students graduate, those seniors are gone. We come in Monday morning and continue working. Along about the 1st of August, those names are electronically removed. I come in and my seniors are gone. I can't look at their records again. They're electronically removed, but they're also hard copies that go in a permanent folder in a closet, and they go all the way back to 1956. Mr. Graham's are in there, Mr. Honeycutt's are in there, Councilman Taylor, Councilman Fagin, Councilwoman Fagin's, other people that I see out there. I have no right to look at them, they're not mine. They are not mine. I could lose my job looking at those. Now, people would ask for such things as looking for a job application, checking references, we give that information. Going into the military, college, or university, we had people that wanted to join the state police, we provide that information. But they all had to sign a document releasing that information. That's the law. We had naval security, naval intelligence, we had FBI, we had CIA, but they all filled out the appropriate paperwork for us to release that information. I couldn't even look up my own son. It's against the law. You can't just willy-nilly go out here and because, you know, you think something's wrong, you can go and access without permission, public documents. You can't do it. And you do it under the guise of, well, I'm being a good guy, and I don't, I don't agree with this. But here's the other part of this, and that's why we had the first motion. This was staged, there were people, there are photos here, folks, of the burn site. We're going to find out who took them. We're going to find out who took them. It's not town employees because they're in the picture. And here are the pictures from the back. Somebody got up on there, were they authorized to go there? Was this a town employee doing this? Somebody tipped somebody off that, hey, the town's getting ready to burn. Let's see if we can embarrass somebody. I don't care if you burn them, I don't care if you shred them, you put them in a bag, put them in the Huron River, I don't care. I want it to be done correctly, and if this council votes to dispose of them by shredding, that's fine with me. But that's the way to do it. It's not this underhanded and trespassing and taking documents that do not belong to you. It's against the law. I wouldn't dare go to his place of business and do that. Go on, go on some farmer's property that's posted, no trespassing, and take something and see what happens to you. See what that farmer does to you without the permission. What is the difference?
Mayor Marion, are you finished, Councilman?
For now.
So, for the public's information, I drive down that road a lot delivering. If I'm accessing from the lake or going, until this incident occurred, there was never a no trespassing sign on that property. Never, never. We were also told by town official that all of the documents were burned, everything was destroyed. We find out that that was not the truth. Again, this is about the continual lies and misinformation that is given to this council. I have a problem with it. I have a problem with that. But, you know, does mine count? You have a problem, I have a problem. It's not right. And until that happens, maybe this community at large won't be angry. Maybe these builders won't be angry. The citizens are ready to see us move forward. They are clearly speaking in the streets, they are tired.
Yes, they are.
They are tired. The old guard is gone. You've got to get, it's gone, I'm sorry. That, that time has passed, and they're ready to see this town grow. But in order for that to happen, we've got to have somebody that'll tell the truth. You can do anything to me but lie to me, spit on me, but do not lie to me. And that's what's happened in my 18 months on this council. And the very first thing I went to Mr. Callis and said, and I told him upfront, I, he might remember the conversation, I said, Kim, I have a trust issue with you coming on. I said, I hope we can bridge that gap. It hadn't worked in 18 months. I'm not saying he hadn't done a good job, he hadn't been a good steward of our money, he has. But at the end of the day, in my opinion, again, this was like that scripted, scripted attempt between three other council members that were here before that you led, a scripted attempt to censure the mayor. It's to try to embarrass, that is a public attack, they're correct. What Ms. Hayes said, you're a public attack, you are publicly attacking another official. If the hip, his citizens that he represents had a problem with him doing that, let them do it. They're the only ones that can get him out of office, are the ones that elected to put him there. But you, Mr. Taylor, shouldn't have a problem with that. It's his citizens that he represents. This is nothing, again, in my opinion, it's nothing more than a smear campaign by you because you're on your way out, and it's just unfortunate. I really thought better of you than that. And I think the public, 98% of the public will see this as a lame attack on another citizen. And it's sad.
Mr. Mayor, could...
Councilman Taylor? Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, I'm sorry.
No, you, go ahead. My colleagues, I think, have seen during my short time on this body, and I think citizens who've attended our meetings have seen, whether it's the popular stance or unpopular, I'm not particularly concerned with that, but the premise that rules equal fairness. Not for the sake of making rules or enforcement of rules, that should never be the goal. The goal should be the equal treatment of all under the law. That is the vow, the oath that I take as an attorney, but that doesn't make me special. In this case, being a member of town council does, not because I'm privileged, but because I'm obliged. I'm actually obliged to fulfill number one on that code of ethics, which I signed. And I don't know the status of who signed that code of ethics, but I know I did. And in it, it requires that, put my glasses on, it requires that the citizens of South Hill are entitled to impartial, ethical, accountable, and efficient government. It also requires that elected public officials abide by the laws of the town and through that, the laws of the Commonwealth. Regardless of the stated intent today, but focusing more on what we know, what we have seen Mr. Moss do is in front of YouTube and the citizens in attendance and all of us, return documents to our town attorney in a bag that he stated he had obtained from what we have considered to be a burn site operated by the town. That is not a controversy, that is not debatable, it is by his admission. It is literally by his physical admission in presenting these documents. Well, why does that matter? For the reasons indicated by Mr. Taylor, my concern is that any document would be removed by any officer or any non-officer from a town facility. Because they are your documents, they are our documents, and we as town council members are not empowered to remove them. We must follow the rules. This is not merely a matter of trespassing, it may be a matter of larceny. Indeed, consider that the General Assembly by Section 18.2-107 states, if any person steal or fraudulently secrete or hide... seven states, "If any person still or fraudulently secrete or hide a public record or part thereof, he shall, if the offense be not embraced by another code section, be guilty of a class six felony." The motion that's been presented today is for a referral to the police for investigation and possible prosecution of this or any other crime. As a criminal defense lawyer, as part of my practice, among other things, I do not take this lightly. It is a solemn, serious allegation. I am not a prosecutor. I do not know that Mr. Moss would be charged or either convicted. I do not know. But as a public official, knowing the laws of the Commonwealth, not just as a town, a town councilman, but as an attorney, I am obliged to follow the law. And for me to ignore it means I'm essentially breaking it. Compound that with the trust that I've been given by citizens who have elected me to this position, and whether they return me to it or not, or, or, or send me home, whatever their preference, that's fine. But I'll still be an attorney and I'll still have my principles. And that's what, that's the fact, that's what remains of this. Consider why the General Assembly would have rendered such a serious charge based on the description I just read to you. It's because they're your documents and not ours. And that means we're responsible for them. And that is the reason, Mr. Mayor, that I have seconded the motion and encouraged my colleagues not to ignore what is an inappropriate manner of changing policy. The appropriate manner is to propose a motion. Move that all documents be shredded, that's fine. I prefer that method. Mr. Moss and I agree. But in the interim, it's my belief, based on his admissions and the actions that we've all witnessed, that are even transcribed, if not witnessed, on video, that documents were removed from property that was operated by the town. And for me to ignore that does not rest well with my conscience or my oath that I took when I swore before this body and as an attorney. Thank you.
As we know, this situation's gone on for several months. It is almost, it has turned into a he said, she said, they said, everything. The first motion that I supported was the freedom of information. The only way to find out exactly what took place, who took pictures, who said this, is through the freedom of information. That's entirely separate from what Mr. Taylor, Councilman Taylor, is requesting at this point. I'm in favor of finding out, getting to, finding out who said what, who did what, via the freedom of information. Now, as far as the second motion that Councilman Taylor is requesting, no way will I support that. No way. I don't think it's the correct way to pursue this matter. I think another way could be done, could be worked out, don't know how, but I don't think that this is the proper way to pursue it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Can you tell me, or maybe Mr. Callis can tell me, how many hours we have spent as a town government reviewing videotape, interrogating employees on who took a picture that is really, in my opinion, irrelevant? Since nine eleven, we have told people, if you see something, say something. We had individuals that saw something that they thought was questionable or inappropriate and they acted. And now, certain members of this council want to persecute them for doing, in my opinion, what their civic duty calls upon them.
That's correct.
We have multiple times attacked our fire department. We have falsely accused them of taking photographs. You know, where does this stop?
Mr...
I tell you where it should stop. It should stop at the head of the table. It should stop with the person who's responsible to this council and the citizens of this town to make sure that these things are done properly, to make sure that the information that's reported to us is accurate. You know, what, I mean, what do y'all think about somebody's livelihood being threatened? Do, I mean, do y'all think that's okay?
Who you referencing? You keep looking at me for, are you referencing me?
I'm saying...
Are you saying that I did this?
I didn't say that. But what I am saying is, I have had a letter sent to my employer threatening my job.
When was this letter sent?
If this is what the citizens of South Hill, if this is what kind of government you want, then, okay, so be it. This is not how local government should be working.
I have a question. I think I heard over here, Councilman Hunt?
I don't, I don't have anything else.
Okay, Councilman Taylor?
I'm sorry. Mr. Estes is our town attorney. What position does this put the town in?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, the taking of, of town documents, the legality of it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, no, hang on, all right. There's a, there's a question on the floor.
I think that we've, there's been some investigation, and I think the referral that you all are talking about would flesh out more details, that we just don't have information to. But this, this is clearly was town property and there was a no trespassing sign that was passed by on the gate. And we know the materials were brought here that were off, off that site. I mean, it's, it, it, those facts speak for themselves. But, you know, to Councilman Taylor's point, I don't know if, I don't know if the, you know, having this referred would lead to charges or conviction. I, that's just, that's, that's, that'll be entirely up to those officials.
And I understand that. That's why I made the motion in that format.
And, and again, I want to reiterate to the public that it was no sign, Mr. Estes, you keep referring to this sign, but there was no sign ever on that property, ever, until this situation occurred. And that's the way we do things, to put the kibosh on things. And that's not the way to do things, in my opinion. County property, I mean, y'all keep going back to the trespassing issue, there was no sign on that stupid fence. It's never been a sign there until this happened. Why did we wait until something like this happened to put a sign out?
Mr. Honeycutt?
I'm, I'm speaking in the air.
No, continue, I'm just trying, I had to fly over here, my ear.
I'm finished.
Okay.
Councilman? Mr. Callis, you would be the one that would authorize the placing of a no trespassing sign on town property, correct? When was the sign put there? What date? Before Mr. Moss or after the incident?
After.
That's all I need to know.
I can't tell you the exact date without asking the staff. Without asking the staff. But when those photos were there...
Excuse me, you answered my question, that's all I need.
I'd like to hear the rest of that. I'd like to hear the rest of that.
When all of this happened, I consulted the set town attorney. We've never had an issue until now with people going to that site other than authorized employees. Never had an issue, to my knowledge. The only people that went there were town authorized employees for purposes of disposing of things. When I shared this with the town attorney, he asked me, "Is there a no trespassing sign?" And I told him, "No." He said, "Well, you need to get one there." So, we did, put it there.
Okay.
I, I...
Good job.
Please, please.
But, but, it was put there, it was put there...
That's the problem.
Before the, before I received, before Mr. Moss came to my office, I believe. CJ, do you remember the exact date when it was put there?
All right, hey, there's a question. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, question.
The other thing, the other thing that, that we, that I want to make it clear, that I want to make it clear, is everything that I have shared with you is what was shared with me, and I believe what I shared with you to be the truth. Every time, I have no reason whatsoever, none, to lie about anything. What has been shared with you was what was explained to me, period. So, that needs to be clear right now, okay?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I want to reiterate that much has been made of the no trespassing sign. In seconding the motion, the motion is, the motion is for referral to the police. And, and let me interrupt my statement. Is there a police report on this matter? Mr. Estes?
There's a statement from one of the police officers.
All right.
And so, that's available. And I, I would like to share that, to keep in mind that the facts, investigation, as mentioned, a lot of this has to be, has to be vetted out. There's a lot more to, to, to this for other officials to actually consider.
Thank you. With that in mind, acknowledging what I have seen, as well as everyone else in the room, that the very documents that were on town-operated property were returned by Mr. Moss to our town attorney. Whether there was a trespassing sign or not is not the end of the argument. The documents were removed from town property. And they are town documents. They are public documents in the end. And for them to be removed is illegal, whether there's a trespassing sign or not. Again, I'm not the prosecutor and I'm not the judge, I'm just a town councilman, and that's why this is a referral for criminal investigation and, if so chosen, prosecution.
So, for clarification, just on the motion again?
Yeah.
Because I've heard people reference grand larceny, theft, I've heard a bunch of different things referenced. What is actually Mr. Moss going to be charged with? Again, if Mr. Taylor could just read it again? Or what, what was the motion? I just want to hear the motion again, please.
Sure. I move to refer the matters of Mr. Moss's behavior in allegedly trespassing and removing documents from town possession to the police and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Okay, thank you.
And there is a sign. Any further discussion?
May I, may I say one other thing? I'm sorry. I don't take this lightly.
Neither do I.
Okay, hang on, please.
I'm gonna respectfully ask that you use that gavel, and people continue to interrupt, they need to be removed. We, we, but you're the mayor, so I'm gonna leave that up to you.
Okay, thank you.
You know, right is right and wrong is wrong, and we keep hearing blaming the town manager as a scapegoat. We keep blaming this person as a scapegoat. We've been lied to. No one's lied to, I mean, the evidence, he walked out with the bag. They didn't belong to him, they belonged to you, they belonged to me. They're documents, your documents. I'm not happy that they weren't all burned, but that's, that's a, that's an issue for him to work on. That's not my issue. My issue is to protect us, me, you, our documents. They're our documents that were on display. And we don't know if they're all turned in. And I'm not, I'm not accusing him of keeping them. I'm just saying, man told me the other day, he said, "Ben, how do we know you've turned them all in?" And I said, "I don't." He said, "Why don't, why don't you look at the bag?" I said, "'Cause I can't look at the bag, they don't belong to me. It's not my property, it's the citizens' property." I'm not out to hang him, but we've got to stop. This is breaking the law. It's breaking the law. And this information I had at school, I, I couldn't, suppose something happened, I said, "Well, let me tell you this, what this student did when, when, um, their, their discipline wrecked, and I just volunteered." I couldn't do that, I'd lose my job. I'm no legal eagle, I had one course in, in school law, and I had enough to keep my school and myself and my kids and, and teachers out of trouble. I'm no legal expert, but I know you cannot share public information like that. Public documents that don't belong to you. You can't do it, it's against the law. Or it's the way I interpret it. And all I'm asking is let the police investigate it, send it to the Commonwealth Attorney and make a decision.
Call for the vote.
Call for second.
All of the favors?
Say aye. Roll call, vote please.
Yeah, I am. But the motion on the floor is to call to vote, and I have a second, do I not?
I, I call, I call for the vote.
Okay. Second. Roll call, Anna.
Bacon Spoon?
No.
This is in regards to calling the vote. Call, call of a...
This is a separate motion.
It's not, it's not a motion for what Ben, Councilman Taylor...
This, this is supposed to end the discussion.
Oh, yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Luster is absent, Moody?
Yes.
Moss?
Yes.
Ben Taylor?
Yes.
And Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Roll call, Anna.
Bacon Spoon?
No.
Graham?
Now, back up, y'all have totally confused me now.
Okay, well, we are voting on Councilman Taylor's motion.
We are voting on either yes, we do want to move forward, or no, we do not. No.
Honeycutt?
No.
Luster is absent, Moody?
No.
Moss?
Cannot vote?
Yes.
No.
Ben Taylor?
Yes.
Joseph Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, counsel, the next item is closed session. I would entertain a motion to convene in closed session, discuss the following, as permitted by Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one, A subsection eight, legal matter involving consultation with counsel on asset sale and negotiation.
Second.
All of the favors, say aye?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Okay. Okay.[414.91] Okay.[140.86]